All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, good evening. And thank you for being here. My name is Henry Garrido. I am the Executive Director of DC 37, and also I'm the Co-Chair of the Commission, along with Arva Rice, who could not be with us today. I want to make sure that I thank Dennis Wolcott, the President's CEO of the Queens Public Libraries, and the staff of the Flushing Branch for hosting us this evening. Tonight, we kick off our second round of public hearings. Thank you. The Commission has been in panel to conduct a thorough review of the Charter and craft proposals to be put before the voters. This is our chance to create a better functioning city, one that is more transparent in its activities and more accountable to the people. It is an opportunity to make changes to ensure our city is less vulnerable to manipulation, corruption, and/or fraud. I know that all my colleagues take this responsibility very seriously. While the Commission was convened via local law, passed at the City Council, we are an independent body, regardless of the merits. Any proposal that can be achieved by the law, by local law, will likely not be up for our consideration. The Commission will not consider any proposals that weaken local democracy or New Yorkers' rights. Shall I continue or should I wait for any interpretation services? Okay, cool. Right. Our first rounds of borough hearings and through meetings with the community partners and organizations will receive many suggestions on what to change in the Charter. Following that process, the Commission's staff produced a preliminary report outlining several focus areas for our consideration, including government accountability, budget transparency, and land use. Our second round of hearings will concentrate on these topics. With each hearings convening, covering one topic, tonight, for instance, we will hear testimony on budget transparency. A final note on the process. We are not the only Commission tasked with viewing the Charter. The Commission is distinct from the Charter Revision Commission convened by the Mayor. Both Commissions are working simultaneously, but separate. Let me start by introducing the Commissioners, so asking them to introduce themselves. But first, I'd like to introduce Harry Isaac Black, which is joining us today as our Council. Please give him a hand. Give him a hand. And now I'd like to ask the members of the Commission to briefly introduce themselves, starting with Commissioner Agarwal.
Good evening, Rahul Agarwal. I was appointed by the Mayor. Thanks.
Mark Winston Griffith, appointed by Public Advocate Jomani Wilent.
I'm Manny Pastore. I had the honor of being appointed by the Speaker of the City Council.
Dr. Ram Raju, appointed by the Staten Island Borough President.
Joanne Yu, appointed by the Brown.
Rachel Goodman, appointed by the New York City Comptroller.
Good evening, everyone. Macawall, a member of the Commission, appointed by the Manhattan Borough President.
Good evening, Robert Moraglio, appointed by Bronx Borough President Vanessa L. Gibson.
Good evening, I'm Alan Swisher. I was appointed by Queensborough President Donovan Richards.
We also have some members join us via Zoom. So would you like to get yourselves permission?
Sure. Michael Rasiopoul, appointed by Borough President, Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynos.
Can everybody hear that? Can you put that volume slightly higher, please? All right, let's do that again. I'm sorry, we couldn't hear you.
No problem. Michael Rasiopoul, appointed by Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynos.
Thank you all for being here. Let us proceed. Before we start, we'd like to start with the adoption of the minutes corresponding for the meeting on March 18th and 20th, and March 24 hearings. They've been distributed to everyone. Please just make sure that, just as a note, the Commissioners that are present, whether all Commissioners can vote to adopt the minutes, whether they were present or not. Any objections to the adoptions of the minutes? If not, we'll take a, we'll take a motion. Is, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for March 18th, 20th, and 24? Motion has been made. Do I have a second? Any questions, any corrections? Hearing none, let's take a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying a aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? The ayes have it in so order. So let us move forward. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a resolution calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign S 590-83665, which is a bill that would repeal the provision that this allows the referendum proposals on the ballot when the Mayor's City Charter Revision Commission submits the proposal. And let me read a little bit about this. In New York City, voters most approve certain changes to the City Charter, to the Charter proposed by the City Charter Commission, the City Council, or the voters. However, the Mayor has currently the ability to quote bump unquote any other charter amendments from the ballot simply by appointing a Charter Revision Commission and having that Commission propose a charter amendment, regardless of scope. This limits the voter's ability to effect meaningful changes to the city's governors. The bill would prevent the Mayor Commission from bumping any other Commissioner amendments from the ballot. Or, okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the resolution calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign S 98-3665?
I just got a question about...
Well, let's take a motion first. Let's say a second, and then in the discussion, we'll do that.
I see, okay.
Motion has been made, any seconds?
Second.
Motion has been made, properly second. Now, let's go into questions. Go ahead.
I don't have necessarily a substantive objection. I was just, is it, is there, I guess what I'm wondering is, have previous Charter Revision Commissions adopted these kinds of resolutions to state matters? I don't know if anyone knows or from the staff.
Yeah, I can tell you from experience, we had serving racial justice commissions and all of this that we did.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the resolution? Okay, hearing none, let's move and take a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it in so order. So why don't, uh, let's see. Yeah, so why don't we, yeah. So we're gonna turn a little bit today on the substance, and I wanna take a moment to take, talk about the portion of tonight's agenda which will focus on budget transparency. As the Commission's staff indicated in its preliminary report, there are a number of areas that New York's local democracy could be strengthened by improving budget transparency and accountability. This includes strengthening the independence of oversight agencies by establishing baseline investments, providing greater transparency into appropriations, spending, and revenue forecasting, clarifying when the Mayor can hold spending approved by the City Council, setting rules on the road for adding to and withdrawing from reserves, and adding new voices and diversity to the city's government rulemaking body. At nearly $115 billion annual budget, New York City has come a long way from fiscal crisis of the 1970s, when the city was near bankruptcy. The city no longer runs annual budget current account deficits and has strong revenues, greater than those of 46 states. The funds, current expenditures, and debt payments. The city bond rating remains very high or highly rated. And despite these improvements, our current fiscal framework has, has grown outdated, with a wide range of financial issues on their consideration. The Commission is interested in hearing more tonight about how we can update the Charter to better support our government's economic responsibility to the people of New York. Before we begin hearing testimony, I remind those in attendance that this is a formal government hearing and that the corral must be always observed. As such, audience members shall remain silent at all times. If you intend to testify today but have not yet registered to do so, we will accept registration up to the first 30 minutes of tonight's hearing. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. Video recording or photography is not allowed from the witness table. At tonight's hearings, we will ask folks to limit their testimony to three minutes. I will let you know when your time is up. While tonight's hearing focuses on budget transparency, we welcome any testimony on the proposed revision to the Charter. Commissioners are encouraged to ask questions based on the testimony given. I'd like to invite our first witness to the table. Richard Lee, Director of the City's Council Finance Division, up to the witness table. Please make sure you introduce yourself before you begin your testimony, and please limit your statement to three minutes. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
Can you hear me? I'll do my best to limit it to three minutes. My name is Richard Lee. I am the Finance Director for the New York City Council and want to thank the Commission for their opportunity to speak today. The preliminary staff report to the Commission outlined several proposals that seek to increase budget transparency and make the budget process more effective. In my testimony today, I will address the importance of these proposals and expand upon them to further insight, to provide further insight into the budget process. Each year, the City Council, the city's policymaking branch of government, adopts the city budget, the primary policy document. Budget adoption typically occurs at the end of June, prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year. But adoption is only one point in the budget process. The city's budget is not a static document, but rather a series, excuse me, a series of modifications that are set throughout the year. The city's Charter requires the Mayor to make regular financial updates through the submission of four financial plans, the November Plan, Preliminary Budget, Executive Budget, and Adopted Budget, each of which trigger budget modifications. Through each phase of the budget cycle, the City Council has several charter mandated responsibilities. But unfortunately, some of this Council's most critical responsibilities set forth in the Charter ambiguous and oblique, creating situations where the Mayor has circumvented the intent of the Charter and upset balance of powers between the legislative and executive branches of government. The asymmetry in the budget process is probably most evident in regard to the forecasting of revenues. Typically, budgets are viewed as a set of spending priorities that directly reflect policymaking determinations. Because the Charter mandates that the city budget be balanced, the amount of expenditures in the budget are directly correlated with the level of revenues. Currently, the Charter bestows the Mayor the sole responsibility for determining how much revenue is recognized at adoption and throughout the fiscal year. To be clear, the Mayor's power to set revenue forecast is solely about when the revenues are recognized and not about how much is ultimately collected. The Mayor, for example, can forecast that the city will collect $20 billion in personal income taxes in a year, but that does not necessarily mean that at the end of the year the city will actually collect $20 billion. Rather, the revenues generated in a particular year are a product of a number of factors outside the Mayor's control, including the economy, tax laws adopted by the city and state. Similarly, the size and timing of categorical grants that the city receives are largely a function of grantors of those funds. Through the city's agencies do have a role in successfully submitting applications for those funds. Despite this limitation, the power of when to recognize revenues is a critical one. Recognizing revenues, or when they actually get put into the budget late in the fiscal year makes it extremely difficult to allocate those resources in an effective and efficient manner and undermines the ability for the Council to negotiate the budget as an equal partner. The estimation of revenue should be determined objectively based on economic and historical factors and not subject to politicization. But in reality, the Mayor's sole authority to set revenue levels is a significant power that gives him an upper hand in negotiating the budget. Consider the adoption of the fiscal year 2024 budget. After a number of austerity financial plans in which the administration reduced spending across agencies, during budget negotiations, the City Council sought to make restorations to many of those municipal services. The City Council knew the cost to restore those needed services based on the information gleaned from the many weeks of public hearings and the amount of dollars that are available. But the amount of dollars that were actually available was not as evident. While the Council was able to make its own estimation throughout forecasts of revenue, it's still beholden to the framework set forth by the administration's revenue forecast. The amount available to make critical restorations was based on how much and when the revenue was recognized by the administration, either adoption or throughout all other phases of the budget. In FY '24, the administration held back revenues at adoption, only recognized additional funds throughout the year, which undermined the city's Council's ability to equitably negotiate the budget. In that year, we adopted a budget that included $71.1 billion in city tax revenue. But by the close of the year, actual collections were $74.2 billion, or 4.4% greater. So while the Council's revenue estimates made at adoption were lower than the actual collections, we were still a lot closer than what the administration had estimated. So had even a portion of those revenues been recognized at adoption, the negotiation for the fiscal 2024 budget could have been more robust and fruitful, and we could have avoided the inefficient task of cutting services only to restore them midway through the year. Exacerbating the potential for politicization politicization of revenue estimates and the asymmetry of the power it creates is the fact that the Mayor is actually able to amend his revenue estimates prior to adoption of the budget as long as it is quote unquote "fiscally necessary to do so due to changed circumstances", and as long as it provides this written determination to the Council.
Mr. Lee, I'm gonna ask you to summarize because you're going beyond...
Sure. If you give me like another minute. So as, as long as the, as long as the administration decides that the negotiations aren't going well, they can unilaterally submit a letter to the City Council after the executive budget has been submitted to reestimate the revenue that have been making it difficult for the City Council to actually negotiate. This was a fact that happened in 1998 when Mayor Giuliani and Speaker Bologna attempted to negotiate a budget. The Speaker then tried to put through a non-negotiated budget in which the Mayor then reduced the estimates for the revenue intentionally to undercut the ability for the City Council to actually pass the budget. We have issues with underforecasting of revenues that create transparency issues because most of the dollars that are underestimated and then realized in the middle of the year are actually put towards closing future year gaps. So we don't actually know the fiscal situation of the city's budget because all those mid-year adjustments to revenues that could have been recognized earlier are instead going towards closing caps. The last thing I actually want to bring up are budget modifications and units of appropriation because as part of the city budget process of each one of these financial plans, the City Council has to pass budget modifications either on the expense side or the revenue side. But the power is delineated by the Charter, which is to amend, I can't have the exact wording. It was to add, subtract, no, increase, decrease, add or omit to any unit of appropriation is outlined in the Charter, but it doesn't specifically state what we are allowed to do and if we are allowed to create new units of appropriation when a budget function already exists for that. And the last point I want to bring up is Mayor powers or empowerment. So the Charter seemingly creates this power to create a power balance between the City Council and the Mayor by giving the City Council the ability to amend the unit for appropriations and adopt their own budget. But the Mayor has a power of empowerment, meaning that similarly what we see are in the federal government with the Trump administration, who is refusing to put out dollars that this Congress has already appropriated. Similarly, the Mayor has powers of empowerment to refuse to spend dollars that the City Council has ultimately passed in the budget. And we don't see why there is a need to have any empowerment powers. If there was a need to change the budget because of outstanding existential circumstances of the economy, we can always do that through budget modifications, a process that already exists. So I'm happy to take any questions. I do apologize for taking a few more minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Are there any questions for this witness?
Hi. I, on the revenue forecasting, do you have a recommendation specifically about how to get around the initial recommendations coming out of OMB?
So there have been a couple of proposals put in the past. You know, one that we have looked at and have been seeing if it's a viable option is having some sort of like a consensus revenue projection. There are many, there are several different government monitors who also do their own revenue projections. Again, it's a projection.
Yep.
But I know we have roomful economists who are trying to agree on something which is almost nearly impossible. But we do have different government agencies, including the Comptroller's Office,
Yeah.
City Council, IBO, and OMB, who are all putting out revenue forecasts. And I think if there is some way that we can have a consensus on what we actually determine is the revenues, it'll take out a lot of the issues that the City Council has when we're trying to pass the budget. We go in and say we want $500 million to restore, you know, universal pre-K. But if the administration is saying, well, we're not recognizing these additional revenues at this time. We don't have it. Then there's no recourse for that, right? So we're having additional consensus on revenues might be helpful, and it's something that we have explored.
So I'm gonna get super nitty gritty for a minute. Because I did check with our, the Comptroller's Office's budget lead on this proposal because Borough President Mark Levine actually made a similar proposal in the last, in the last round of hearings. So I was curious. And one of the things they brought up is that it actually is a credit rating negative to have consensus budget estimates. The credit rating agencies don't actually like that as a practice. So that's just something to be aware of. And also wanted me to point out And also wanted me to point out that that is what they do in Albany and their budget is always late. So, um, consensus forecasting actually can, it can allow for more, um, consensus and discussion, but it also can. Be a slowing factor in some of the negotiations. So I want to put those two points out there.
Yeah.
As even, even coming from an office that might gain more control in this space. Um, a lot of our budget experts are actually not fans of the.
So, uh, so that's why we've been exploring it. Well, the city budget can't be late, right? We're on a deadline. So we aren't able to pass any budget extenders, so we are on a deadline to pass by June thirtieth. And we have heard that, uh, the argument for that, and this is why we have saying, been saying that we are sort of exploring it. So on the flip side, what would also be beneficial is for the city to provide the actual revenues that they're going to recognize, right? Because we don't get that at executive budget. The executive budget, they send a revenue estimation for the executive budget. And then that stays and we have to pass a final revenue recognition at adoption, right? Because the budget's in four phases. We do adoption and then November, January, preliminary budget, executive budget. At each one of the phases, we are updating the current year budget. And we do get a revenue mod at the end of the year. We don't know what it is. So even getting that upfront will actually change the balance of power when the city council is actually negotiating for the budget, right? So that is another alternative on, you know, what it is that we can get in terms of information. Instead of blindly going in and saying, we think this is the estimate for revenues coming in and we think this is what the estimate for resources are. Actually getting that upfront, right, before we pass the budget might actually also come to the same conclusion of a more transparent budget.
Thank you. I think with all due respect, I don't know that Albany will be the best example that we want to have here in the city. But, um, I, I think, uh, I, I want to ask a question about empowerment which you raised. Particular as it applies to budgeted positions. Quite often the council negotiates a budget with the mayor that has staffing, uh, issues. Uh, and then O M B issues a peg or a hiring freeze or a two for one or a three for one. Often right after the budget adoption, which delays, uh, the implementation of a lot of the things that were agreed upon. Uh, we have about twenty-two thousand vacancies right now in the city of New York and we're not moving on them for the most part. So my question to you is. How do you think, uh, this charter commission should view this in terms of changing that dynamic? Of the powers of the council, the power, the purse of the council in appropriating. Funds that the city is not spending for hiring folks that they should be.
Yeah, so we have negotiated many positions to be put back in as part of budget negotiations. Across many different agencies, including Department of Investigation, Parks. Um, so whenever this happens, the administration then would be funded. Through our budget negotiations for a very specific number of headcount and at the end of the day, they actually might or might not, usually not. Um, hire those positions out. So it goes to a similar, it's not, it doesn't necessarily scream empowerment, but it goes to the same sort of power. That the administration has, uh, that the executive has in whether or not to spend dollars that has been allocated for a very specific purpose. Uh, in the past and maybe even currently, we're not really sure, but it could be done intentionally because vacancies that are budgeted. All gets swept at the end of the year as additional funds for the year, right? And we roll it to the following year to pay for out year gaps. So if we have twenty-two thousand vacancies that we're paying for that actually didn't get paid out budgetarily, then that's twenty-two thousand times. Whatever the salary is, let's say a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars that the city saves and then puts that towards the future year. Right? So there's also a financial incentive in order not to hire if the city was trying to. Not hide money, but find a place where it can sort of park money that it's not intentionally spending. I think that there needs to be a way to. Put the executive branch, uh, uh, on, I know, but make them have a way so that they actually. Spend the dollars that are finally negotiated at the, uh, at the adopted budget, right? If it's headcount, then they should actually go through with the process of, you know, posting jobs and going towards hiring all the headcount. Instead of simply budgeting it in and using things like two for one or hiring freezes in order to hold those positions and then later sweep it at the end. So that is an executive power that we should figure out how to sort of ensure that they are spending. In the same way that we have to look at empowerment because it's the exact same action, right? It's a refusal to spend dollars. That is finally negotiated and put into the budget.
Thank you. Commissioner Regal.
Thank you, Chairman. I followed your, your comments, your comments as a lot of interest and just as a, as a comment. In a private industry, if you really miss the revenue forecast or miscalculate your revenue forecast, your stock prices take a huge hit. If it happen too often, you lose your job. That's what usually happens. So you're probably aware of that.
Mm-hmm.
That also happens in hospital, private industry. If I run a hospital system which I ran. If I grossly mismanage my revenue forecast, then I'm accountable. It doesn't need to be done. So I'm kind of. Fascinated to see that how these forecasts are being kind of either not appropriately forecasted or what happens. So can you give me a, a kind of ballpark figure? How many times the revenue forecast has been changed in a year? And how close they are at the end of the year to what was initially forecasted?
Uh, so it changes all throughout the year and.
How many times?
So that's, so that's part of the issue that we have, right? It's recognition of money. So the administration, the Office of Management and Budget, O M B gets to decide. When it actually recognizes it, right? Puts it on paper. They might, they might know how much property taxes were received, but when to actually put it into the budget. Is the, you know, one part of the issue, right? By the time the November plan comes out, in November, we already know what, you know, tax revenue we received from March through, you know, July, August, September. But they usually recognize those dollars in January when they have to balance the out year gaps, right? So it's about recognition. The dollars in, in terms of your question about, you know, how many times it changes throughout the year. In each part of the plan, it will usually change in one form or another, uh, with the recognition of new revenues here and there. Uh, ultimately up to O M B to decide when to do it. But the criticism that I think a lot of, uh, organizations and even us, the city council has is that. The city has been overly cautious and overly conservative in its revenue estimates. So I'll give you twenty twenty-four as an example. I think they passed the budget at twelve point. Four billion, hundred and twelve point four billion, and we ended the year at a hundred and, I think, sixteen and a half billion, right? So we're off by several billions of dollars. And so even if we are to recognize a portion of that, we're not even saying, oh, we should have done all four, right? But even a small portion of that, five hundred million dollars, right, or two hundred and fifty million dollars, even going a little bit higher. Would have actually helped tremendously in that very specific fiscal year because that was a year that there was. Um, cuts that are being made across the entire city, right? Cuts for libraries, youth programs. Universal pre-K, like everything, everything was being slashed because of austerity measures. Even a few more dollars would have helped, uh, a few more policy programs, a few more organizations. There were programs that were slashed at twelve million dollars entirely and we never got those back, right? So even a few more dollars would have helped is what we're trying to, the point that I'm trying to make.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, and thank you for your testimony. It's, it's very helpful. So I, my question follows from the previous commissioner's question a little bit is, I, I mean, to me, the accountability systems are the city council's power. To approve the budget or not approve it and to make amendments and go through that process or the. Or the voter's ability to say, I'm not happy that this program was cut or not cut. Why don't you think that's enough?
So, so you outlined two items. So I'll go with the first one where the city, where the city council can vote not to pass the budget, right? So, you know, ultimately we want to get to a place where we are and we are fiscally responsible in passing the budget. The city charter outlines a process where the city council can actually pass its own non-negotiated budget. We can just do it ourselves. But then it sort of becomes almost meaningless because of the mayor's powers of empowerment, right? So that check system against, and then against the executive is actually sort of wiped away. Because even if we were to adopt our own non-negotiated budget, which, you know, hasn't been attempted since nineteen ninety-eight. But even if we were to attempt it, the executive branch could all still refuse to spend those dollars, right? The secondary check on that is through the use of budget modification. So. Throughout each plan, whenever there are changes to the expense budget or the revenue budget, uh, the expense side or revenue side of the budget. The, uh, the city council has to take action for, uh, what's called a budget modification, either an expense modification to the expense side of spending. Or a revenue modification on the revenue side of spending. Um, but if we feel that, uh, if we feel that certain changes are necessary. The charter doesn't fully outline those powers. It sort of vaguely references it. And we, you know, we have a legal understanding that we have that power. But I think the charter can do a little bit better in specifying that the city council has the ability to create new units of appropriation. Uh, whenever we feel that a, you know, a better transparent budget is necessary. So a unit of appropriation is sort of like the building blocks of the budget, right? We categorize it. So we have an agency budget and we have, you know, unit, unit appropriation for personnel services or unit appropriation for O T P S, for U P K. And then it gets further broken down by categories, right? So, you know, let's say for example, N Y P D, uh, overtime. Same way for the overtime right now sits in the chief of department's budget. Uh, if the city council says, you know what, because it's, it's such a large portion of the budget, you know, more than a billion dollars, we want to create its own unit of appropriation. Um, we don't actually know, you know, we, the charter sort of hints at that we have that power, but we don't have that fully enumerated. Uh, and it could be challenged because the charter is intentionally or unintentionally kind of vague about it. Um, our legal experts have always told us that we do have that power, but, you know, having that fully fleshed out in charter will be like one way that we can. Close this gap of the power imbalance between the mayor and the city council. And the empowerment factor that I had mentioned earlier will help close and make it more equitable sharing of, you know, power when we pass the budget.
So is it your testimony that there was, uh, the charter, this commission should look at creating a unit of appropriation specifically? To that of police overtime?
No, not necessarily. Uh, it's that, you know, if the city, a lot of these items, we negotiate with the administration. So we create new unit for appropriations all the time and we negotiate that out with the city. Uh, if there was an instance where we were unable to negotiate something and we wanted to create a new unit of appropriation. We want to make sure that the charter fully enumerates those powers, uh, more clearly. So that, uh, it creates a better balance between the mayor and the city council's roles in the budget process. And on the empowerment factor, we don't necessarily think that empowerment is a necessary item. Or necessary power that the mayor should have only because if there were extenuating circumstances in which empowerment was necessary because of outside economic factors. All those changes could be made through a budget modification at any time.
But after the fact.
But, I'm sorry?
You're suggesting that be done after the fact?
Uh, budget modification? It could be the, the, the administration could send us a budget modification anytime it wants.
You know, I'm talking specifically the other way around. If the appropriation becomes so large. You're suggesting there ought to be a process by which you can declare a new U of A, right?
Yes, 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 or to better enumerate those.
But after adoption?
We, we could anytime, any. Because, um, when, when, so the charter outlines that whenever the city council receives a revenue mod. That the powers that are, uh, enumerated in the charter, uh, for the executive budget actually kick in. So we get full budget powers whenever we get a revenue modification, right? Um, but the ability to create new unit of appropriations within that are sometimes ambiguous. Uh, I, so overtime is a very good example because what the charter states is that if there is already a program that exists. Then you cannot create a new unit of appropriation for that. A unit of appropriation has to be a new thing, right? So we can't simply create an overtime unit of appropriation right now because stuff that already exists within a budget code. Under a unit of appropriation, right? So we want it to be a little bit more clear is what we're trying to get at.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Question. I think I'm asking this question for all the nonprofits. It's a nerve-wracking time for everybody as we are getting news about all the federal cuts. Um, right now, um, nonprofits are getting letters and they're in the process of laying staff off or trying to figure out. How they're gonna manage when the need for services is increasing. And so my question is around reserves and the rainy day fund and when will. The council and O M B, when do you determine how to release some of that funding? Um, because, you know, come November, when, you know, when the, there, there's an update. It is the most anxiety-filled time for nonprofits because we're like, oh my God, are we gonna get our money? What, what are they gonna cut? So, we know there's money in reserves, but. We, how does that work? I mean, like the rainy day fund and when does it get released? Because right now the, the service providers are just really struggling right now to figure out. How to keep their doors open.
Yeah. So there's two types of reserves, right? There are what we call in-year reserves and then, you know, rolling reserves. So the rolling reserves are the rainy day fund, which was created, you know, rather recently, a few years ago. And the R H B T, the Retaliated Health Benefit Trust, which was the actual, like rainy day fund before we created the rainy day fund because it sort of acts like a pass-through. So the rainy day fund should be our actual reserve, uh, and we are allowed to at any time given that we, uh. At the year, if you have a surplus, the city can choose money to put into the rainy day fund and it'll stay in there perpetually. Um, the in-year reserves, we have two in-year reserves. One is our general reserve and then we have the capital stabilization reserve. So the in-year reserves don't carry over, you know, those dollars are sort of just put in there in case we need to. Tap those dollars to, you know, solve any sort of issues that might arise within the current year's budget. The in-year reserve is largely tapped to close out your gaps, right? So we use largely using it to close out your gaps. So it's not going towards anything other than out your gaps, which is a budgeting issue. Um, but the in-year, but the, uh, rolling reserve, our rainy day fund. You know, we have dollars in it, but it's also up to the administration to choose when to. Recognize those dollars and tap into the rainy day fund. There's no other sort of guidance or outline. Of when the rainy day fund should be tapped into, right? And this is something that we've brought up over the last two years when we had the austerity budgets. Uh, that we had to pass in that we said, you know what, we have a rainy day fund, let's use some of those dollars. In order to help carry some of the organization nonprofits and the city through this sort of challenging time in the economy. Because we are faced with, uh, not only the increased cost for asylum seekers, but, you know, we had inflation. Um, across cities, which was impacting the economy too as well. And so we, the city council has stated that we should look to the rainy day fund, actually create a process in which this is when we will tap it. But, uh, that doesn't exist, right? And it still doesn't exist and it's entirely up to the administration to recognize. That because it's a revenue source. They can recognize the revenue coming from the rainy day fund and choose when to tap it.
You know what else? Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to, um, thank you for the testimony. I, I, I'm just trying to figure out sort of as this commission, um, how, what we do with your testimony. And so I guess the question I would just ask is, you know, as the guy at city council who, who it sounds like is sort of knee-deep in all of the budgetary issues. Um, and speaking a language that I don't speak, right? I mean, I guess my question is, um, what, what, what is the? If you were to sort of say, hey, here's the one thing that, you know, I think is really sort of critical. Um, within, to fix within the city charter that you guys can do, that would really sort of help. You know, with respect to the budgeting process, like what, is, is there that one thing, you know? That I'm just trying to sort of cut through a little bit of it to get to a point where we say, okay.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a, yeah, I, again, that's the proposal.
Yeah, I think, I, I think there's two main things, right? So, and they both are related to adoption of the budget. Um, when we go through the adoption negotiation process, once the executive budget comes out. I think these are the two main things. Number one is the, uh, empowerment power. Because that exists and the city council can't ever say, all right, we want to do our own, own non-negotiated budget, right? That, that power of the city council to bring balance, uh, on the council side is, you know, is hampered in a, in a lot of ways. Because the administration, the mayor can say, you know, we're just gonna impound these funds, right? I think the second thing is the recognition of revenues. You know, we go into negotiations without actually knowing what the revenue, final revenue numbers are going to be. And so if you were to get that ahead, you know, when we, uh, prior, after the executive budget comes out and prior to adoption, not on the day of adoption. Right? Cause that's when we usually get it. But prior to that, then we'll know the exact envelope that we are negotiating, right? If they tell us, oh, you know what, we only have a billion dollars, uh, to add, you know, make restorations for all these programs, let's figure it out, right? Then we're gonna, we're stuck with a billion dollars, but it turns out there's actually one point five billion, right? That's the thing that I think we should make more transparent, right? Cause that's a transparency and a better budgeting issue.
So, so I get, and so number two, I think I get, you're, you're basically saying sort of earlier in the process. Change the charter such that there's a requirement that revenue be.
Final recognize, yeah, final revenues for that current year be recognized.
Okay. Uh, the first one, I'm, just in terms of clarity, are you suggesting, because there, there, the power to impound currently exists.
Yes.
City charter.
Yes.
So is your proposal to remove that power?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't think it's necessary only because, you know, the rules for empowerment are there to address sort of any. Uh, extenuating circumstances that might have, right, uh, with the budget. But any changes to the budget would still, can still be resolved through modifications that they submit. As current practice, right? Budget and expense and revenue modifications that they will have to submit. And so, you know, an action of empowerment doesn't really necessarily make sense, going back to, um, what the Commissioner, Commissioner Grito said about. The mayoral powers of spending, we could appropriate all the dollars that we want and if the executive branch refuses to spend them, then it becomes almost. Fruitless, right? So we're trying to curb that power as much as we can.
I'm sorry, I'm kind of confused. So, the budget does not reflect the reality. That means the revenues are not properly accounted for in the sense that they decide when to account for it, depending on whatever reasons are. And on the expenditures, expenditure side, you decide not to spend the money. Then what is the purpose of the budget at the end of the day?
Nobody knows. So, um, the administration always has actual revenue numbers, right? Cause their Department of Finance collects property taxes, collects all their fees. So they would know at any given point in the year, like how much revenues are going to be coming in, right? So that is a reality that no other fiscal monitor, we don't know that information. Um, but the administration always does. And so they choose when to actually put it into the budget. That's the issue that we have. Um, revenues are always going to be updated because at one point, you know, we are. When we adopt the budget, we are forecasting outwards, right? We're saying, oh, you know what, this year we think there's gonna be seven-five billion dollars in, you know, tax revenue. But through each of the phases, we update that, right? So in November plan, we update it. In the preliminary budget, we update it. In the executive budget, we again update it. And then when the budget is adopted in, uh, with the adopted budget, a whole year has gone by. We know exactly how much money we have, right? So by that point, we know what the rev, the city knows what the revenue is, but the city is the only one that sort of knows what the revenue is, right? And when they want to recognize it as budgetary numbers, it's entirely up to them, right? So that's the issue that we have.
Grab's question. So, when do you know?
So that's a good question. So we know largely, um, what. So there's, it gets a little tricky. So there's multiple points in which dollars. In, on both the expense side and the revenue side, you know, move around and gets, you know, reallocated for one reason. They might say, you know what, this thing that we have for three K, we don't want to use city money anymore. We're gonna put it towards federal, like saving city money. So we actually finally know, like for sure, after adopted budget. The budget is adopted and then during the month of July and August, it's kind of like your credit card. You know how you are paying back, right? So July and August is the time the city pays back, right? We have our June invoices come in and everyone pays off their June stuff. So in July, August, the city closes books, the comptroller releases the act for the, uh, annual comprehensive financial report. And that's when we look and see exactly what the final numbers are, right? So we don't get those final numbers until well after the budget is passed. But during that time, that gap between July and August, the city can still, you need lottery, sort of make some changes here and there without a modification. Um, they can, uh, recognize different federal dollars at different times, right? Do a couple of tricks here and there to switch city money and state money and federal money to save the city some money and then save that and pocket it somewhere else. So we don't fully know until, you know, what the actuals are, until the fiscal year finally closes out in, um, July and August. So one of the things that the council has said was, well, at the final closeout, we should actually have a mod for that. To amend the year that we just closed out, but that's a separate issue.
So.
Yeah.
I can see that. Um, so given this dance that we are always facing, this, this Kabuki theater.
Yes.
The budget process. What role you think independent of separate agencies, maybe not independent is the right word, like the Independent Budget Office, which I'm a. Advisory member or, or the city comptroller's office testifying or even the state controllers. As to the finances of the city, should they play prior to the budget adoption process?
Um, I'm not entirely sure. So we do count on. So all of the monitors, we have different information, right? And we sort of all get, we all get together and we sort of share a lot of information. Uh, the comptroller's office has very good insight on actual spending. Um, I B O gets insight on things that the, I, that the comptroller or the city council doesn't get. We have different pieces of information. So throughout that process, throughout the budget process, we have everyone come in and give us that information. We share information with each other. Um, so, you know, our powers combined, you know, Captain Planet kind of thing. And we're able to kind of piece together what we think it is. Um, but I don't know what further than that. We haven't thought about what further than that other roles that the comptroller and the I B O could play. But, you know, it is crucially important what they do because they provide to the council. Um, additional information that we don't have, right? Uh, when we get to, uh, budget negotiation time. So I can think of what other additional roles we can expand, but I don't. Uh, when we get to a budget negotiation time. So I can think of what other additional roles we can expand, but I don't particularly have that at this time.
Anyone else?
Uh, sorry, I should introduce you. Commissioner Lopez joined us from the beginning of the introduction. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Richard, for your testimony. Uh, good to see you here today. A couple of questions, um, changing gears. I think your testimony, especially on, uh, user appropriation and, and budget revenue forecasting have been very helpful. I, I want to change gears to, um, procurement. And just want to sort of ask the council's perspective. Uh, the charter sets up a process where the mayor has almost complete power over procurement, right? As a majority appointees on the procurement policy board. Agencies issue RFPs, Mox oversees them. So, my question is, does this system work in your estimation for making sure that one, you know, goods that are contracted out are being done in a timely manner and two, um, that uh, we have sufficient oversight. I mean, I know the controls office obviously has their role with contractor registration, but just wanted to make sure uh, that, you know, we're properly taking a look at that as well. You know, something that's been kicked around a lot during our first round of hearings was, you know, modifying or adding another member to the P P B. So wanted to get your thoughts on that as well.
I mean, I don't necessarily see any negative addition of members to the P P B. I think the issues that we have is that agencies across the board don't, they follow P P B rules. But the internal operations of how they pay out, how they contract is sort of different agents by agency, right? So we see this a lot with nonprofit contracts, you know, that's the one item that we hear it a lot of in that if you go to D Y C D, the contracting process while it follows procurement rules is widely different from contract registration to payment compared to like a ACS or a DIFDA across different agencies, they all have followed the same P P B rules, but the internal operation process is not the same. So, you know, we have always thought that Mox, the mayor's office of contracts could really play that role, cause technically right now, the, um, director of Mox is also the chief procurement officer for the city. Um, and so we, and our hope was that that'll sort of be able to be, uh, uh, normalized and made, uh, all practices be normalized and similar across the board. Uh, but that hasn't happened. That's one of the reasons why there was a, uh, uh, a legislation that we're actually hearing tomorrow to, you know, further empower the mayor's office contracts to elevate it to a, you know, actual department and have that oversight power, right? Uh, but that's like, I think the main problem that we have with the contracts and payments and things like that, the P P B rules, while it does have issues and could definitely benefit from additional members, from additional parties, uh, is the application of it across the board that's sort of different and causing a lot of the issues that we have.
Um, thanks. Uh, and then my other question, uh, regards, uh, the 2024 Charter Revision Commission. Um, put proposals that changed the, you know, the fiscal impact statement process. Uh, you know, usually that's something that the council puts out. Um, last year's charter revision required that the mayor also put out something uh, before aging, before, after introduction and also again before aging. So, how has it worked? Um, is it necessary? Has it really changed how that council, uh, you know, proposes legislation and passes legislation? Uh, should we take a look at amending it?
So as, you know, my division is the one that actually, you know, puts all those documents together. Uh, so in previous practice, we only had to do financial impact statements for bills that we were going to pass, right? And that made a lot of sense in terms of a resource issue. Um, because legislation sometimes get written and we want to hear them and then figure out what the issues are. Not only that, once a bill is going through the aging process, it also gets negotiated because maybe, you know, one thing or another, uh, needs to conform with one, you know, policy or another. And so, you know, it was a lot easier for us to conceptualize the costs of everything. Uh, when, once the bill was finalized, right? Now we're in a position where we have to do a fiscal impact statement for all bills being heard, some of which we do, you know, some of which will never pass because of one reason or another, right? But in order to, you know, comply, we are doing fiscal impact statements for every single one of these. We receive from the office of management budget, a fiscal impact statement, of which we always provide our own. And so we created a lot of additional sort of, um, work that has to be done for a piece of legislation that is not yet finalized or might not even pass, right? Um, so I would say that it's become overly burdensome. When we do definitely want to know the cost of a program, if we're going to pass it, right? But it's become overly burdensome because we are attaching it to every single bill that is moving.
Every bill, meaning even bills that normally wouldn't, you wouldn't consider having, that would, that would normally not have a fiscal impact?
Yes, yes.
So there are a lot of, uh, of these statements, I'll say.
Zero. Yeah, no fiscal impact. Yeah. So we, you know, we have, most of them are no, no fiscal impact. I'd say the vast majority are no fiscal impact.
Alright, thank you. We, uh, we got to move on. We got a lot more testimony. I want to thank you, uh, Mr. Lee for your testimony today. Uh, we're going to call our next witness.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, forgive me if I mispronounced this, but no D. Sorry about that. Could you just state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name's Navdi Baines. Um, thank you to the New York City Commission to strengthen local democracy for holding this hearing and for giving us the opportunity to testify.
Speaking to the mic, please, cause we have folks listening online.
Okay. Is this good enough? Okay, um, I'll just start from the top. Thank you to the commission for the opportunity, um, to testify today on the topic of budget transparency in local government. I am Navdi Baines. I'm the Associate Director of Advocacy and Policy at the Asian American Federation, where we proudly represent the collective voice of more than 70 member nonprofit organizations that serve 1.5 million Asian New Yorkers. Budget transparency is a cornerstone of democratic governance. It ensures that residents, advocates and policymakers have access to timely, accurate and detailed information about how public funds are allocated and spent. I see the timer is not on, but I promise I'm, I'm timed to three minutes.
He's keeping. Don't worry.
Um, the complexity of New York City's budget structure, however, and its amendment process makes it really difficult for community members to truly understand where our money is going. So we're here advocating on behalf of nonprofits, uh, the nonprofit sector generally, as you had mentioned, but also we specifically serve the Asian community. Um, the commission's report that was released, um, highlights several ongoing challenges. And drawing from the report and broader best practices, AAF is in support of the following recommendations I'd like to make. The city should create clearer, more defined terms around units of appropriation. This could include mandating that large units of appropriation be disaggregated into more specific programmatic lines to ensure public accountability and facilitate a clearer understanding of how taxpayer dollars are spent. Agencies should be required to break down funding by specific program areas, especially for services that impact marginalized communities. A functional definition of units of appropriation should be enshrined in the charter to ensure public transparency and council oversight. Another recommendation is to streamline our procurement system. We could do this by cutting unnecessary steps that delay contract registration and payment, setting and enforcing strict internal deadlines for contract execution and reimbursement. And by requiring public reporting on registration times, payment delays and contractor demographics. The nonprofit sector is struggling right now with all of the different changes that it's experiencing from other parts of government and the city's funding is that much more important to ensure that our local CBOs can support our community. What contracting delays looks like is our CBOs are having to do the work and get reimbursed a year later. What that looks like is families not getting the mental health support that they need to prevent crises from happening. Our CBOs are on the ground. I mean, our community, especially in the Asian community, but all communities of color really rely on non-clinical practices, um, and our CBOs who they trust to meet with, to, to support them. And so these are the types of services that are struggling when our city is delaying contracts. And when we ask our CBOs, what out of our 70 CBOs, what can we do to advocate for you on the city level? The number one thing they say is help get our contracts sooner. And that is sadly a perpetual delay that we all experience. Another recommendation is to create a system of checks and balances. Um, a new term I learned was impoundments today. So impoundments should be restricted to clearly defined emergencies. There should also be an established process of council review and a mechanism for the council to challenge inappropriate impoundments. The last recommendation is to strengthen participatory budgeting and ensure that language access and community outreach are prioritized. So all New Yorkers can engage meaningfully. People in our community, we invited our nonprofits, um, to join us in cases here. Um, to shout out, thankfully they're here, but we noticed going through the report and just trying to explain this whole process altogether. It's really hard for people in our community to understand it. Um, half of us in the Asian community in the city are limited English language proficient. And so we need some more plain language, um, information so people can get out here and just understand the budget process. So in conclusion, the fiscal year 26 budget is a pivotal moment for New York City to recommit to transparency, equity and accountability. By enacting these recommendations, the city council will not only promote better governance, but also help secure a stronger, fairer future for all New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, any questions on the commissions?
I just don't have a question. I really wanted to thank you and, you know, the reason not-for-profit exists is because you do these things much more efficiently and much more closer to the ground than the government can ever do. So I think we need to support you the best we can to get this thing done. So, I understand, you know, the frustrations you go through because of the fact that for whatever, I could more confuse the budget because it looks like budget is not really, a budget is not really a budget. So, so we don't know what, who spends what and where and how much. But I really understand your trouble and we really wanted to help you the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
My comment is, being your former boss until four months ago, you did a great job, Navi. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. You'll always be my boss in my
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Alright, thank you for your testimony today. The next, uh, uh, person that testified is Anna Humphrey from the Center for Independence of the Disabled. Are you here, Anna?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony tonight on budget transparency. My name is Anna Humphrey and I am the Transportation and Voting Community Organizer at the Center for Independence of the Disabled New York or Sydney. Sydney is a nonprofit organization founded in 1978 and we are a part of the Independent Living Centers Movement, which is a national network of grassroots and community-based organizations that enhance opportunities for all people with disabilities to direct their own lives. As the commission considers reforms to increase transparency in New York City's budget process, we urge you to prioritize equity and inclusion, especially for New Yorkers with disabilities. Budget transparency should be about ensuring that all communities can understand, influence and benefit from how public funds are spent. Sydney would like to make the following recommendations, the first of which would be to make budget information accessible to people with disabilities. The New York City Charter should require that all budget-related documents and presentations be provided in accessible formats. This includes plain language summaries of key budget decisions, screen reader compatible documents and public budget presentations with live captioning, ASL interpretation and accessible online participation options. Uh, the second recommendation is to involve people with disabilities in budget decision-making. We recommend that, we recommend amending the charter to require a disability impact statement for major budget proposals. Representation of disabled New Yorkers on key budget-related advisory committees and consultation with disability-led organizations during the development of agency budgets. When communities help shape how money is spent, transparency and trust for city agencies will grow, but only if every community member can fully participate. As the commission works to strengthen budget transparency, we urge you to recognize accessibility as a core component of an open and equitable government. Transparent budgeting should reflect the needs and rights of people with disabilities at every stage. We thank you for your leadership and look forward to partnering with you to ensure a more inclusive and accountable city budget process. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I, I commend the work that you do. I, I want to ask you something that has uh, a lot of relation to what you testified about. In New York City, at, at least when it comes to procurement, a lot of the areas are governed by state law in terms of people with disabilities, specifically the New York Industry for the Disabled, which is empowered by the New York State financial law. To basically appropriate contracts for cleaning, for distributions, for a lot of the work within New York City, as long as it comes within a certain framework. Which in my opinion, doesn't allow for local organizations like yours and others here in the city to really be available to bid on contracts or get services or allow for policy changes because the state governs. And it makes it hard for us to amend up in the charter that the state would supersede anyway. So in your recommendation to make those changes, do you see a process by which the state continues to override our charter that would make it harder, even if we have the best possible intention, the best possible language, the best legislation to execute here in the city? I hear, I love to hear your opinion on this, cause something that has always been a problem for me.
Um, I honestly don't know if I have a great answer to that question. I mean, I would hope, I would hope that the city still has some say in those things. Um, but I really don't have a good answer to that, to be honest with you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Anyone has questions? Alright. No, thank you for your testimony today. And the next two testimonies that we have listed are on Zoom. Uh, and I want to test the sound before we start, if you don't mind, cause what happened last time. Starting with Sierra Craft from I Care Coalition. Are you here?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
You can test the sound, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Uh, well, can you start your testimony thing?
Great, yes. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for hosting this important hearing on budget transparency and for inviting testimony. My name is Sierra Craft and I'm the Executive Director of the I Care Coalition. We're a coalition of legal service providers dedicated to ensuring that unaccompanied immigrant children in New York City have access to free legal representation. I'm here to speak about the devastating fallout from the abrupt termination of the Federal Unaccompanied Children Program or U C P and the urgent need to address vulnerabilities in New York City's funding processes that put essential legal protections for immigrant youth at risk. On March 21st, the federal government impounded nearly all funding for U C P, wiping out over $200 million in funding nationwide and over $10 million here in New York City, employing nearly 200, uh, employees statewide working in this program. This leaves children without an attorney overnight and that in New York City, over 1,100 open representatives, open representation cases remain. These are children as young as infants who have fled violence, trafficking and family separation, who are now being fast-tracked through deportation proceedings without an attorney, often not understanding the process or their rights. And without legal representation, their chances of staying safely in the United States drops dramatically. Um, our I Care attorneys have over a 90% success rate when working with them. And kids without an attorney have nearly like a 15% chance of winning their case. So legal representation is critical. The federal government's action to defund a program collapsed an entire ecosystem and safety net. Our member organizations are community-rooted nonprofits with decades of experience and they're having to lay off staff, freeze intakes and make heartbreaking decisions about which children they can continue to support. And here's where New York's own systems fail to offer a backstop. The Charter Commission's preliminary report correctly highlights two deep vulnerabilities, federal empowerment and slow unpredictable procurement processes. In our case, when the federal dollars disappeared, there's no local mechanism ready to respond swiftly. The current procurement process is slow, opaque and reactive, leaving, leaving our frontline providers scrambling to fill the gap without the resources to do so. City council discretionary funding has been incredibly helpful in allowing providers some ability to shift the cases and move more flexibly in response to this crisis. But even that support is not guaranteed as it's not baseline and it's constrained by the city's procurement process, which makes it chronically delayed. This creates serious cash flow challenges for nonprofit providers and makes it harder to act swiftly in moments of crisis like this one. Had a more responsive system that allows for clear emergency procurement been in place, the city could have mobilized quickly to stabilize services for these kids, but instead organizations are left stranded trying to keep children from being deported unjustly with no guaranteed funding to sustain the work. We believe New York must be, build durable protections against fun, federal funding volatility, especially for critical legal services. against federal funding volatility, especially for critical legal services. This means enshrining clearer standards for transparency around impoundment and creating clear and streamlined emergency procurement and safeguards that allow for immediate stabilization when these vulnerable communities are targeted by federal policy changes. These young people are already here. They attend our schools, they live in our neighborhoods and they are New York's responsibility. And we have a responsibility to ensure that due process and dignity are not contingent on politics or bureaucracy. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to share this testimony, open to any questions you all have.
Yeah, thank you for your testimony. I just want to mention the impoundment issue is not just a federal, but also a local one, as it was explained previously by some of the testimony that we heard before. Are there any questions for Ms. Craft?
I have a question. What do I face? Hi. Thank you for your, for your testimony. I'm just sort of reflecting on the news over the past few days and few weeks and specifically the cases where actually US citizens who were children were deported. Now, I know, I don't, I don't believe that was in New York. But I guess what I'm trying to figure out is where the powers of the government and the powers of local municipalities, you know, where do they begin and end? And when you have a federal government that's as aggressive as the one that we have, I'm just wondering the extent to which your recommendations, let's just say that that kind of legal infrastructure was in place in those situations where those children were deported, would that ultimately have, have prevented that? Or is the, the power of the federal government in those moments such that even when you have those safeguards, or sorry, when you have that legal infrastructure, it cannot prevent a, an aggressive federal government like we have now?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, I think ultimately the courts hold the power to make the decisions on individual cases. I think what I'm speaking about is the, is the nonprofit power of pro bono and, and immigration attorneys that we built up over decades-long experience. And so when, when somebody has the right to an attorney, which we're trying to get at the federal and the state level, they're, they're nearly guaranteed to win their case if there is a relief, a form of relief available to them. But without the proper funding, it makes it very challenging to get access to an attorney. So I don't think we could have necessarily prevented these deportations from happening. But I think without a robust legal ecosystem where immigrants have access and the right enshrined in law to have access to an attorney, then it puts all of us in a very precarious spot that when you're trying to defend yourself against a regime that's trying to deport you, you really don't stand a chance. You need a qualified attorney.
Although some of the reports that we've heard already had shown that sometimes the children are already in other countries, like we saw the case in both Honduras and El Salvador. At the time, they reach out an attorney. I think it speaks to the commissioner's comments about the aggressiveness of this current administration to deport human beings, including citizens of this country, that has raised concern, at least to me as an individual, not just as a commissioner. So we thank you for the work that you do and thank you for your testimony. Are there any other questions for the witness? All right, well, thank you for your testimony. We're now going to hear testimony from, forgive me if I mispronounced this, Patri Narcanas Numonur? I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. If you could just kindly tell us how to better pronounce your name or if I did justice, please start your testimony now.
Good afternoon, everyone. Salam aleikum. My name is Putri Rangkamanis and I'm the artistic director and founder of Kindling Sindaw, a 33-year-old cultural organization that asserts reclaim, preserve and indigenous heritage in diaspora. I am, I'm very grateful that there is this commission that is giving attention to budgeting and sharing it to the public like us and making us community members be part, be heard with our, with our concerns with our own budgets as we go along as a nonprofit. So my, my concern that I'm bringing up here is the importance of culture and tradition, particularly for immigrants, people in diaspora like me, to continue to exist and get given, and given attention and be part of the budgeting process of the city and state. Because this is the one that holds the foundational community and uplift the mental health of the individuals, especially the coming in of new immigrants and the, the second generation. Being home, away from home is a big strength and organizing power of the community that will be able to contribute to the, to the process of building a community in New York City. Most of my contentions are already mentioned by other people, other nonprofits who spoke before me. And, but I'm just highlighting that culture and tradition of immigrants, of people in diaspora is very essential as a foundation for highlighting, uplifting mental health and our inspiration to go on living, being displaced from, or being away from home. And I think all of us has that kind of lineage and it's very important that it is given attention in the process of budgeting our, and giving attention to nonprofits who's working with this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Navi.
I just wanted to thank you for your testimony. And between your testimony and the previous testimony, I think as we go through our work, it's going to be incredibly important for us to think about, are we meeting the moment of the threats from the federal government? Are we meeting the moments for the city? And, you know, and I think immigration is at the center of the, the challenges that the city is facing right now and is going to face in the coming years. So I just want to thank you for your work and thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
All right. So thank you for your testimony. This concludes the testimony part of those who have signed to testify today. I just have a number of announcements to make regarding our next hearings. I want to remind everyone that the next hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, May 8th, at Restoration Plaza in Brooklyn. That hearing will be focusing on government accountability. Following that hearing, Monday, May 12th, at the Bronx Museum of Arts, focusing on land use. And Wednesday, May 14th, at the Staten Island Museum of Snug Harbor, focusing on budget transparency. We also have another hearing, following that one on May 19th, at John Jay College in Manhattan, focusing also on government accountability. Okay, pardon me. The first hearing is May 6th, not May 8th. Sorry. May 6th, Tuesday, May 6th, at Restoration Plaza in Brooklyn, focusing on government accountability. All the hearings will be held 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And folks are all invited to testify either in person or via Zoom, like we saw today. Registration and further details on our hearings are on our website at www.thecommission.nyc and www.thecommission.nyc. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion has remained. Do I have a second? All right, let's take a vote. All favor, please signify by saying aye. Any names, any abstention, the ayes have it, and so order. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your participation today.